Calling to order the meeting of February 25th, 2013. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Joyce J. Mike Stites. Bud Starker.
Present.
Joe Demott.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Kristy Davis. And I received word that Mrs. Langworthy will not be here tonight.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of February 11th, 2013?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Starker, discussion on the minutes. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. We have no proclamations or ceremonies tonight, so we'll move on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens who wish may speak on any matter that's not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes. I also wanted to mention that I know a lot of the folks that are here tonight are speaking on a study session agenda item, but they wanted to speak under the regular meeting, so they would have to stay for the whole meeting. So please feel free to speak on study session agenda items if you want. So please step forward and spell your last name for the record, and please state your city and your address.
Eugene Shirley, 4495 Everett Drive, Wheat Ridge, since 1958. Following up on our last meeting, asking question to the city council, I don't get much response from you. And I'd like to go on. Why spend $40,000 on a circus? We don't have money to be spending like that in these economic times. Why pass a law and spend $1,000 on no smoking in parcel? Don't you have better things to do? That is a ridiculous subject to be talking about. Why have high fees on work permits? Now, I understand we have cleared a lot of that up, but in the metro area, a permit fee for energy is anywhere from $60 to $1,500. I'd like to know what it is for here in Wheat Ridge. Why have a fee on franchise fee on trash pickup? You know, that's what's killed. The idea of having a hauler to cover the whole metro area. I talked to our neighbors. We get information. Why spend $200,000 a year on surveying cities? I understand you're not doing that much, but here's one you just passed last year, $24,000 survey on salary. What are you gonna do with that? You could got that information from the internet or the council of governments. How's it gonna be used? Here you are. I got all the numbers. For example, city manager makes 15% less than the average of four. Police chief, he makes 7% more than the average of 50, and so on and so forth. Down at the bottom, you have sales tax auditor, they make 14% more than the average of 12, and so on and so forth. You actually got three guys that are auditors for sales tax. And I don't know why, but a sales tax supervisor and a sales tax... You oughta use some of those hours to monitor the department's spendings. And actually, your allotted spendings, your expense accounts, stuff like that. I think there's a lot of waste in government, I don't know how much in Wheat Ridge, but it should be monitored more, more so. How much stimulus did Wheat Ridge receive and for what? I don't know. But most of the stimuluses that I've seen are for a two-year period and are a waste of money, just to get people jobs. We don't call it stimulus, by the way. We call it investment now. That's the way you spend the government. You invest it. What we need here is more town meetings. I could talk to each of you, whoever you want to go on the subject, but it takes eight of you to vote. And I talk to two, it's not gonna do the job. On marijuana...
That's time, Jim.
Okay, that's it. I could go on and on, Jerry.
I know, I know.
But you know what I'm talking about.
That's time. Thanks.
More laws for the people.
Thank you, Gene. Please step forward and spell your last name for the record, and state your city or your address, please, as you come up for public comment.
Hello, my name is Ted Hyde. The last name is spelled H-E-Y-D. And my address is 917 South Cole, C-O-L-E Drive, in Lakewood, Colorado. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I just wanted to share some good news with you all tonight. I, a couple of weeks ago, attended the statewide Bicycle Colorado Summit in Denver. And this is the second year that they've sold out with approximately 250 attendees from all around the state. And there were a lot of great takeaways from the session that I just wanted to share with you briefly tonight. First is that Colorado is currently ranked, or a third of its residents, Colorado residents commute by bicycle. So that's great news for the state. In step with that, based on 2012 rankings, Colorado statewide is ranked as the fourth most bicycle-friendly state in the country. So that's very positive news and a very positive sign. And talking about dollars, it was highlighted at the summit that just Colorado receives an economic impact of over a billion dollars annually from bicycling. And that includes manufacturing, retail, and tourism. So that was a real, real highlight for me. So, listening to the keynotes speakers in the three sessions I went to, there were really three themes or takeaways. And that regardless of context or where it was in Colorado, bicycling is good for physical and mental health. It's good for the environment, and it's good for the economy. So I just wanted to share that with you and thank each of you for your leadership in helping to make Wheat Ridge a more bicycle-friendly city, as a great place to live. And we really look forward to continued opportunities to coordinate with you all in making it even more so. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
My name is Shirley Walker, W-A-L-K-E-R. And I'm gonna read from my paper so that I don't miss anything. I've had Walker's Quality Cajun Feed Supply for 18 years now. I'm down on Kipling. I'm here because I read an article in the Gazette about Mayor DiGiulio. It expressed the wishes of the residents to be more neighborly. I would like to see the city be more neighborly by notifying the businesses, in addition to the property owners, of changes or construction in their neighborhood. The people that put the meeting on in November to tell the property owners what they have decided to do with Kipling from 32nd to 44th Avenue spoke as if it was already happening, and anyone that owned property involved would have to accept what was offered, and if they didn't, it would be condemned and taken. Is that neighborly? This project is going to affect seven homes and 32 businesses, and most of it is negatively. Was the person who put this fiasco together the same one that fouled up 38th Avenue? A state highway is not the place to put an overkill sidewalk. We were told this is a 10-foot-wide, multi-use trail so that people could walk, mothers could push their babies, kids could ride their bikes and skateboards. This hill is so steep at the top, it should have been a red flag for trouble from the first thought. The federal government is giving $3.5 million for this. Do any of you know why? I'm leaving a copy of Agenda 21 for dummies for each one of you, so that if you have never heard of it, you can become informed. You have already spent $90,000 for this study. You got robbed. I don't like the fact that I pay $25,000 to the city each year, and it's being wasted on something that is not safe and will end up killing someone. A six-foot sidewalk would do just fine and take care of the one that isn't there. There's a five-foot sidewalk in front of my store, and it doesn't need to be moved or increased. If you put this through, all the business owners are gonna be assessed more rent because of the signage changes and anything else the owners will have to change. It will also completely take out several businesses. Gone. I hear all the time that you're trying to bring in more business, but this city is not small-business friendly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And here's your copies for each person. Thank you.
Please spell your last name for the record.
My name is John Mick, that's M-I-K-S. And I live at 9855 West 34th Drive. Been there for 44 and a half years. Council, I would like to speak to the undergrounding of utility lines between 32nd and 35th Avenue. In the past years, we have had numerous problems with the utility line in the area of Kipling. Down outages, and at one time, a pole was knocked down at that particular corner, the 34th and Kipling. In addition, these lines are unsightly, and would be better if they were put underground. The money would come from the franchise fee, from the franchise that the city is already paying to excel, and would be better used to improve the aesthetics on both sides of Kipling. The poles that are presently there are very close to the street, and do provide a safety hazard as you come down the hill. This project is now... This project is now... Has not been scheduled... This project has not been scheduled with Applewood Center, but is scheduled for the 32nd and 35th. The Applewood Center probably will never be. We don't know. It has not been scheduled yet. If we don't do anything now on Kipling, it will never get done. I'm asking that you continue with the original plan along that stretch of Kipling. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record and state your address or your city.
My name is Patricia Roush, R-O-U-S-H. I live at 9845 West 34th Drive. I didn't bring any notes, but I agree with everything John Mick said. It is a hazard. We've been out of utilities. Power has gone out numerous times along there. I think the money was allotted, or through the franchise, that those power lines be put underground, and I think that's what should still happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ronald Rush. I live at 9845 West 34th Drive. And I see the kids walking down the street there, the high school kid... Or the... Not high school, junior high school kids. They come from farther south than what we are. And oftentimes, there are utility trucks and things to block the road. The kids have to go out into the street to get around, or go in front of them. Anyway, it's... It really creates kind of a hazard with them having to have those trucks in there every once in a while to keep the utilities going to our homes. I don't especially like the fact that the kids have to go around anything. I think they oughta get on the sidewalk, and that's where they oughta have to walk, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else for public comment? Please step forward and spell your last name for the record.
My name is Ken Friends, F-R-E-N-S. My business address is 4363 Kipling Street. And I'm concerned about the bike route or pedestrian route, whatever, that you're running down Kipling, on the east side of Kipling. And I would like to know how come we are never notified? You never send us anything? It's kind of a sneaky situation, if you ask me. Nobody ever gets notified. And my other thing was, on the stimulus money, I thought maybe the city could find a better reason to burn up this stimulus money instead of this here 10-foot sidewalk. Now, I understand it might be 10 foot, 13, or 13 plus another 13 feet. Then I heard it might be 20 feet, so we really don't know what it's gonna be. And running this path next to a state highway, I think is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of. And it's just a matter of time before someone seriously gets killed on there by pushing their child down the sidewalk or what have you, or walking. And my suggestion would be the less people on Kipling, the better. We have accidents on there every day, and I'm sure you're aware of it, and this is just gonna cause more. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Polich. I'm representing my mother, Helen Polich. And we live at... She lives at 9990 West 35th Avenue. And my parents have lived there 60 years, probably, 56 years. We've had like five or six cars come into our property during that time. The last time they widened Kipling, they took a huge chunk of our property, didn't give us any ingress into our property from the backside. Recently, when they were doing the park down there between 35th and 38th, they came out, ran into our sewer line when they were doing their work. My dad was dying at the time. We were out, no water, no sewer for three days while he's... You know, there's no notification to the people that are there. The only time we get a notification is once the survey comes out. We're coming out to look at your yard. I had to go down here to find out if they were gonna take property when they were gonna do it. I had to come here to find that out. Nothing in the notification that said anything about that. Just, "We're gonna be surveying your yard, and can you sign this letter?" Which I still haven't done. I probably won't do. You know, you guys have to learn to notify the people that are living there. How many businesses and homes are down that stretch of road? Not that many. You can send us a letter to notify us about, "We're gonna survey this, we're gonna do that," but you can't notify us of what's coming up, you know? How hard is that? Are we supposed to always have to read the papers or whatever to get that information? Not all of us are, you know, in the positions you guys are in, or that interested in it, for that matter, you know? Maybe we should be more so, but a lot of us have our lives to lead. And sometimes, we're just too busy, or we've got other problems that we're taking care of. So we'd like to be notified, and why don't you let us give some input into these situations? You know, we've lived there for 50, 60 years, you know? Why not ask us about what's gone on through the years? I can tell you, we've had rollovers in front of our property. What I suggest is what you guys should do is take a bicycle, drive down 32nd and try to make the turn at 35th, right before the park. We've had rollovers through the years. Kids, back in the day, fell out of pickup trucks. We've had rollovers into that park that is there now. And we've had five or six cars in our yard in those years. The last one was probably three years ago. You can check accident records. You know, you should let us give a little input into this situation, as well as just, you know, I can understand you guys wanna make improvements to the city, but you could have a regular sidewalk down there and not bother anybody or have any problems, you know, with anything.
That's time, sir. Thank you. Anybody else here for public comment on any item that's not on the agenda or it's on the study session agenda? Well, thank you. Moving on, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing now, we'll move on to item one, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce items 1A and 1B. Item 1A, a motion to increase the project contingency for the ITB 1106 Swazworth Boulevard Multi-Use Trail Project in the amount of $29,222.70. And item 1B, a motion to ward ITB 13-03, 2013, Slurry Seal Project, the foothills paving and maintenance, in a contract amount of $322,680, and to approve a contingency of $16,150. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve consent agenda items 1A and 1B.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve items 1A and 1B, with seconded by Mr. Stites. Any questions or comments on A and B? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinance, is on first reading. Item one is Council Bill 04-2013. Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 042013, ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 12390 West 44th Avenue from Agricultural 2A2 to Mixed Juice Neighborhood, case number WZ12-11 Frisk. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural 2 to Mixed Juice Neighborhood for property located at 12390 West 44th Avenue. The proposed rezoning area includes one parcel, the total size of which is approximately .34 acres. Currently, the subject property contains a single-family residence, and the purpose of the zone change request is to provide the owner with expanded options for use of the site. The zone change is the first step in the process for approval of future development on this site. No changes are proposed for the property. If approved and redeveloped, an administrative site plan review will be required to confirm that the proposed development meets the standards of the Mixed Use Zone District. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 042013, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 12390 West 44th Avenue from A2 to Mixed Juice Neighborhood on first reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, March 25th, 2013, at 7:00 PM in City Council Chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number two, with seconded by Mr. Stites. Discussion on the first reading? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item number... Next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item three, Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number three is a motion to ratify mayor oral appointment to the Housing Authority representing District One, term to expire March 2nd, 2018. At issue, the members of the Housing Authority are appointed by the mayor and ratified by the city council. Cheryl Brungart has served as the District One representative on the Housing Authority since 2001, and her current term expires March 2nd, 2013. Four applications were received for this position. The first is from Cheryl Brungart, seeking reappointment. The other applicants are Monica Duran, Jennifer Walter, and Jessica Klingsporn, all of District One. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Starker. I wanted to let council know that I've... I know or I've talked to all the applicants... Uh, thank you, Mr. Starker. I wanted to let council know that I've, I know or I've talked to all the applicants, and I want to thank all the applicants who've come forward. A lot of the applicants are brand-new people who live in the city of Wheat Ridge, but, you know, less than ten years. I also wanted to thank Cheryl Brungart for her service on the Housing Authority. She was there when I was there when we first started it. So we had some good applications come in. I've talked to everybody that I could, talked to Monica Duran. I think that Monica would, would be interested, but she also mentioned that the time might not be quite suitable for her work schedule at four o'clock in the afternoon on a Tuesday. I also talked to Jessica Clingsporn, who would be a great candidate. She's a real estate broker. And it wouldn't be a conflict of interest because she wouldn't be the broker for the Housing Authority, but she's also getting married this summer, and she'll be busy with plans throughout the summer and fall. Jennifer Walter, uh, applied for the Wheat Ridge Urban New Authority last, last fall, and she wasn't appointed. She was, um, applied for the at-large positions. So I talked to her when I, when she wasn't appointed to the Urban New Authority, and I mentioned the Housing Authority was another option. So she looked at it, checked it out, she applied. And so, uh, I think she'd be a great candidate for the Housing Authority. So at this time, I'd like to bring up for appointment would be a, a new person, and thank all the applicants, and thank Cheryl Brungart, but I'd like to make a motion or make a recommendation for Jennifer Walters.
Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to ratify mayoral appointment of Jennifer Walter to the Housing Authority representing District One, term to expire March second, two thousand and eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to ratify Jennifer Walter. Discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero. And who was the second?
Mr. Reinhardt. Thank you. Thank you. Item four is our boards and commissions appointments. We'll start with District One, Mr. Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I move to reappoint Joel Hayden to the Animal Authority. I move to reappoint Betty Jo Page to the Board of Adjustment. I move to, sorry, that was a reappointment, to reappoint Amanda Dear to Parks and Recreation. I move to appoint for the first time Judy Hutchinson to the Parks and Planning, to the Parks Commission, thank you. Uh, I move to reappoint Ellen Bucknann to the Planning Commission. And I move to reappoint Robert Aldridge to the Liquor Commission.
I second that.
We have a motion for many new appointments and reappointments. Discussion on those? For District One, please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, thank you. District Two, Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to reappoint Rhonda Champion to the Animal Welfare Commission, term ending three-two sixteen. I move to appoint David Coons to the Board of Adjustment, term ending three-two sixteen. I move to, some of these I didn't check to see if they were reappoint or appoint. To appoint Philip Plummer to the Building Code Advisory Board, term ending three-two sixteen. I move to reappoint Scott Ohm to the Planning Commission, term ending three-two sixteen. And I move to appoint, it's a, a new appointment for District Two, Anthony Devia to the Liquor Authority Board, term ending three-two sixteen.
Is there a second?
I second.
We have motions and many reappointments and appointments for District Two, second by Ms. Jay. Discussion on the appointments?
I do have a discussion.
Ms. Jay?
I, I just realized that there was an, I thought there was an appointment for the Cultural Commission, District Two, for Margie Seifer. And I, I didn't see it, perhaps, uh... You're right. I'm, thank you so much.
So are we, we're good? Okay. I guess we're good. So, please poll the council for District Two.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, thank you. Uh, District, District Three, who is, Mr. Stites?
I'd like to appoint Margie Seifer to the Cultural Commission, term ending three-two fourteen. John Mix to the Liquor Authority Board, term ending three-two sixteen. And to temporary reappoint Dick Matthews to the Planning Commission until we can find someone, but at least that chair will not be empty while we do.
Is there a second? Second. We have a motion to appoint three different positions for District Three, discussion? And you're reappointing Mr. Matthews with the idea that he did resign, or he wasn't gonna be reappointed, but you're temporarily... Please poll the council, with second by Mr. Pond.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, thank you. Uh, District Four, Mr. Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to appoint Christine Teraskiewicz to the Cultural Commission, term ending three-two twenty-fourteen. Reappoint Robert Hans to the Animal Welfare Commission, term ending three-two twenty-sixteen. Appoint George Pelaise to the Liquor Authority Board, term ending three-two twenty-sixteen. And appoint Christine Teraskiewicz also to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term ending three-two twenty-fourteen.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a motion for District Four appointments, with second by Mr. Pond? Please poll the council.
I was waiting for other District Four representatives.
Yeah, right.
Oh, can, please revote.
Maybe a different vote.
Joyce, can you vote? Get the end of the...
Please revote.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, who wants to do the at-large appointment for the Coach, or Election Commission? Do we have a name for that? Janelle?
Pardon me?
Do we have a name for the election? Oh, okay.
It's what's in your packet.
Okay. Mr. Starker?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Michael Snow for the position on the Election Commission.
Second.
Uh, I move to appoint Michael Snow to the Election Commission, term ending twelve thirty-one thirteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stites, Mr. Reinhardt, I believe, and Mr. Demott. Please poll the council on Mr. Snow?
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Item five is Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce a motion to approve the purchase of the twenty-thirteen vehicle replacements and accessory equipment in an amount not to exceed hundred and sixty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Is the motion in order?
The motion's in order.
I move to deny the purchase of any vehicles at this time for the following reason. None of the vehicles meet the maintenance standards for being replaced. Therefore, there is no justification for replacing them. I further move the five thousand dollars be put into an account for any refurbishing vehicles that they may need.
Is there a second?
Second.
Can we have a motion to deny the purchase of vehicles but to add five thousand dollars into a maintenance account? So it was second by Mr. Demott. Discussion on the main motion? Ms. Jay?
I haven't studied this as thoroughly, of course, as Mr. Stites, but I'm wondering if five thousand dollars is enough.
Well, I would hope it would be, based upon what they gave us on the list and stuff. You got a wheel here that's rusty, it can be painted, very simply. Uh, you got hubcaps on, I think, one of the Hondas, uh, that were shady or whatever, you paint them. A lot of the GM problems, or vehicles do have problems with the oil pump, you replace it. There are some that they have a problem with the power steering pump, you can replace it a heck of a lot cheaper than you can buy a new vehicle. It kind of dis-maze me a little bit that some of these vehicles are rusty or have a, you know, rust spot when they should have been painted to begin with. But I, I think five thousand dollars is enough for any problems that might arise with these vehicles.
Mr. Pond?
I, I guess I'd need a little bit more clarification on, on the statement that none of the vehicles meet the replacement policy. Is that, I want to be clear that that's what I heard, and then if, if that's what I heard, I guess I'd like to hear from staff just to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly.
That is correct, because most of, we have the mileage bumped up now to a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And if you look like that Chevy van, I think only has fifty-two thousand on it. The Chief's old car, I think, had forty thousand. Uh, that's a little premature to be dumping a lot of that stuff. And I, and I do know some of these pickups do have snowplows and they are gonna get beat up, but you replace it, you can fix them. And I think you can fix some of the older ones a heck of a lot cheaper than you can fix buying some of the newer ones. But I just can't see at this particular time replacing a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars with the vehicles when I think five thousand dollars you could refurbish them to where they need to be.
Yeah, well, would you like to?
Sure, Mr. Goff, go ahead.
Respond to our replacement policies?
Yes, be happy to. Uh, mileage is only one of the criteria that is used in recommending vehicles for replacement. And we, we do have at least one, the, the pickup that the undercover police officer uses will be in ex, in excess of the hundred and twenty by the time we get it here and outfitted. So that one is, is the, the better of all the vehicles, but it's gonna exceed the hundred and twenty thousand miles. And, and the police chief certainly wants to make sure that the undercover officer has a good vehicle for the type of assignment that he has. The, uh, the other vehicles have histories in, I've given you the, the five-year past costs associated with operating these vehicles. The reason that you see some of the vehicles that have dents and rust on them is that we knew that they're getting close to re, replacement, and rather than putting additional funds into repairing these vehicles, we know that they're close to being replaced. The rule of thumb that we typically use is fifty percent of, of, of value. And that's what we use for justification. We have, well, there's been two Hondas that we've taken out of the fleet in the last year and a half. Each of those needed a transmission replacement, and the transmission replacement is gonna cost like seventy-five percent of the value, Kelly Blue Book value of the vehicle. So that's kind of the guide we use, is the Kelly Blue Book value in determining whether or not we make those repairs. We certainly can, can make repairs on these vehicles if you would like. I think that little Chevy S-ten, I think it has a value right now of about fifteen hundred dollars. So, uh, we certainly can keep it running. It may, we may spend a lot of, lot of money putting these in, in, in shape to operate them for several more years. I'd also like to just raise the issue that the policy that we have, the replacement policy, was a, is a policy to, um, replace vehicles on the, I've forgotten the term I'd like to use for this, but the cost-benefit analysis of, of repair. And so, there is a, there's a industrial wide-used curve where you end up trying to replace vehicles before they are in such poor shape that you spend more money long-term keeping them operable than, than replace, than, than taking them out and replacing with something new. So, uh, it's your policy. We'd be happy to change the policy. If you'd like us to upgrade the policy and use some different criteria, but that's the policy that's been historically used in Wheat Ridge. Um, the police chief's car is not being replaced. All we're doing with it is trying to be smart about our replacement rather than buying a new vehicle to replace the, the Honda that is again gonna be over the hundred and twenty thousand or close to it by the time we get the, the new vehicle here. What we want to do, and what we're suggesting, is take the police chief's vehicle, move it down to a position that puts more miles per year on the vehicle so that we don't end up in a situation that we have in a lot of other instances where we have a vehicle that is twenty years old and still doesn't have a hundred and twenty thousand miles on it. So if we were to rotate the vehicles, we're, we're talking about doing that as well with the under, unmarked police cars. When we have the opportunity to move those into other positions, when we have done that in several instances, we've taken, uh, police cars and moved them. We have one police car that's being used at the senior center, and we've, uh, have taken one patrol car and moved it into one of the staff, as a staff car in the police department. We've had a, a police car used as a staff car at the rec center. At the, and the IT is used a staff car, so we have rolled those out when they have less than the hundred and twenty thousand miles and taken them into another position where we can balance the usage of the vehicle so that we try to maximize their use.
Mr. Stites?
Okay. Barring graphs, you know, particular things like that, it kind of bothers me that you would let a vehicle get down to a particular point where you think you're gonna replace it and then not maintain it with, uh, you know, paint or, you know, proper things. You've got two mechanics on duty down there. I, with the economy the way that it is, uh, we don't know what might come up. We have good vehicles today, so I, I just think that we could save the city at this particular time over a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. I just think sometimes we need to be a little bit more prudent in what we're doing. But we do have two mechanics down there. Some of this stuff that I see, there's a rip on a seat cover, get a new seat cover. Uh, you know, it's the same thing with these wheels and stuff, paint them. Uh, it really kind of bothers me. We do this all the time. And, and yet the average public can drive a vehicle like that, but we can't? Uh, it really kind of bothers me sometimes. I think it's an arrogance of government that they must think that, but it just bothers me that we could be saving a hundred and, almost a hundred and seventy thousand dollars at this particular time where we don't know where we may need it coming up. I don't know. Uh, but I think the vehicles are good. I just don't think at this particular time that we need to be spending the money on replacing them.
Mr. Demott?
Excuse me. I agree for the most part that most of these trucks are, they're work trucks. They're meant to be worked, and they're not meant to be pretty. They're meant to be, they're meant to be useful. You know, I mean, I, this ninety-three S-ten, um, you know, I look out the window at the restaurant at the Parks thing. I see this thing ten times a day whizzing down the street, and it's, it's no hiccups whatsoever. This thing's not sitting on the side of the road. It's a, must be a heck of a truck, because it's still going. I see it all the time, and it kind of cracks me up. You know, the asphalt truck I see in the pictures, but are we replacing that? I mean, I saw something with the cabin chassis last week, but I don't see what we're doing.
It's, it's, it's budgeted to be replaced. And what I did is I provided the, the, the pictures of the patch truck, and we're gonna try to get clarification. Yeah, it's not in this, we have not, um, taken the time, we're getting ready to put together the bid, because that one will have to be a, a bid project. We'll have to write specs, et cetera. So if, I was gonna ask during the study session whether or not you wanted to move forward with the, the replacement of that one or not. If we don't replace that, then we'll probably need to spend, I'm guessing, ten to twenty thousand dollars in repairs to the, to the asphalt unit that's on the, the truck itself isn't in bad shape, but the asphalt unit. Um, to keep it running, we need to buy a lot of parts for that asphalt machine that's mounted on the back.
The Honda, I know, if we order it, if we're at a hundred and twenty thousand, I mean, we've, we're at eighty-eight hundred miles a year is all we're putting on that car. We got two years on it before it even hits the maximum mileage, so I can see that one sticking around. The van, it's a work truck. It's, it's meant to be worked. If it's a little dinged and painted, I, you know, I don't think that bothers anybody. It certainly doesn't bother me. And I, we'll just look at that asphalt truck when it comes, I guess, but that one don't bother me being ugly either.
Any other questions or comments?
Any other questions or comments before we pull the council? Mr. Starker.
Mr. Perotto, what, how many vehicles does the city have?
Oh, um.
Approximately, I mean, this.
We've got that, we've got three hundred and fifty pieces of equipment, vehicles and heavy equipment that we maintain, I believe, I'm sorry, a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty pieces of equipment. It's the large pieces, three hundred and fifty is all the equipment, but we have a hundred and fifty large vehicles.
So this represents about five percent of our fleet? These six, if my math is somewhere around right, may or not be. And I've only been on this council a little over a year. How often, we come around with this every year to replace vehicles, that's sort of an annual?
It's budgeted, we have a yearly replacement program where we try to keep the vehicles and the fleet as fresh as we can afford. And we do that in the budget process every year.
Okay. And do we typically, do we typically come back with about five percent replacement on the vehicle fleet?
No, tip, it's a matter of cost rather than number. And so last year we replaced a plow truck, which we finally put in operation this last week. And so we have a large piece of equipment like that, that's, you know, a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar piece of equipment and there's very little else that gets purchased.
Thank you.
Ms. Jay, do you have another question?
I'm curious about two mechanics with that many vehicles, is that, is that working out?
Pardon?
We have that many vehicles and only two mechanics?
Yes, because we're staffed to do minimum, minimal maintenance, oil changes, brakes, tires.
And then we send out.
And if we have major work, transmission work, major engine work, then we outsource that work and we outsource bodywork. And we also have a couple shops that do our upholstery. And so we do a lot of upholstery on the vehicles. Again, when we know they're close to getting retired, we don't waste the money to make them pretty before we take them to auction.
Oh, then we make them pretty, we drive them ugly. I appreciate Mike's, you know, sensitivity to it, I do, I think it's pertinent. And if, and if we didn't allocate this much money to it, the money would go in a rolls over, or does it accumulate? Because we don't want to get to the situation where we've got a bunch of vehicles that are falling apart all at once, how does that work?
This is general fund money that you budgeted.
That we budgeted.
Last fall and so if it's not spent, it stays in the general fund.
It stays there.
Mr. Pond?
Well, for what it's worth, I absolutely understand the intent of your motion. And I think there's parts of it that I, that I agree with and understand. I don't, I won't vote for the motion just because I don't quite agree with the, with the five thousand. I feel like we have some other things to discuss for sure, the policy and deferred maintenance and being sustainable with such a large fleet. So we're clearly not done talking about this and so I appreciate kind of what you're bringing forward, but I just wanted to kind of explain why I won't be supporting it. I think there's some, I don't think it's as simple as cutting it down to five thousand and leaving it that, that's why I won't support it.
Well, would you like me to amend it and raise the figure?
Well, why don't you have somebody else make, right now we have a motion to deny and then add five thousand into maintenance. You can amend this motion, say ten thousand, you know, twelve thousand, whatever you want into maintenance and that would be an amendment. So somebody has to make an amendment.
I'd actually like to maybe take a different line, I don't know if anybody agrees with me. I'm uncomfortable with, I mean, first, I'm uncomfortable with two things on opposite sides of this issue. On the one side of the issue, I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we shouldn't have an ongoing maintenance program of some kind. And it strikes me that five percent of a fleet on a sort of annual basis is probably the right-ish number of vehicles broadly to be replacing. But that doesn't get me to the place of recognizing that this is the particular list, that's the right list. And I am uncomfortable as a policy question with the idea that we have a stated policy and the recommendation on the table doesn't clearly follow the policy in terms of the miles on the thing. So if the policy's wrong, so rather than, then in sort of an arbitrary way with all due respect, pick a number tonight. What I would prefer to do is if we have no pressing needs, which is what I think they told us the last time, is to actually come back and get the policy in a fashion that reflects an appropriate need. So what I guess I'd like to do is substitute a motion to defer to study session until we review the policy. Because I think we just conclude the policy, or at least as it's being proposed to be implemented, is inconsistent with the recommendations on the table.
Can I clarify that first? Just to clarify, the policy is, again, it's based on age and mileage plus a list of six or seven different factors that staff takes into account. So just, just keep that in mind, I'm not arguing that it doesn't need to be looked at or discussed, but it's not just age and miles. But we also look at rising maintenance costs, excessive downtime, accident history, overall mechanical.
And to be, and to be clear, the staff report doesn't reflect enough information to make the case one way or the other that we have or haven't met the policy. So I don't know.
Mr. Stites.
Yeah. The problem that I have is, I've been on council nine years, so you think back nine years when things were somewhat good. They were replacing vehicles at thirty, thirty-five thousand. And I said, whoa, wait a minute, that can't be because these new vehicles today go for a hundred thousand before you even think about putting plugs in them. So we raised it up. And then here a few years ago, I think we saw a need, so we raised the mileage up. You know, if we were in a perfect world and things were good, you know, we asked people to think outside the box and do particular things like that, to be innovative, to be flexible, and I think that's what we have to do today with the economy the way that it is. And I think it's gonna get worse with the sequester that they keep talking about Friday. So I think we're gonna have to be, think outside the box, be innovative, be flexible. Or some of this stuff, yeah, sure, you would love to have a policy when things are good, but things aren't good. And so I think you have to take all this stuff on an individual basis and say, do we really need it at this time? I know Central City just replaced some trucks that were, what, nineteen-seventy-nine, had three hundred and some thousand miles on them, but they couldn't afford them. So they finally got some money together and replaced them. You know, I don't want to be cocky about this thing and I don't want to say, you know, we're in such good shape that, you know, we can do that. But I would rather be a little bit more flexible at this particular time. I don't think we need the vehicles, I don't really think we need to go over the maintenance stuff. I think you take it on an individual basis. And, you know, I would be willing to raise up the refurbishing fee to, you know, whatever you want to do, twenty thousand, fifteen thousand, I don't know. But I just don't feel at this particular time we need to be buying vehicles.
Mr. Demont? Oh, Christie, do you want to make an amendment?
Thank you, well, I want to make amendment, but I just have another question. I guess the other thing I want to ask when you're looking at replacing the trucks and vans is, do you look at track record? Because I'm just looking at this Chevy van and it's saying that it's no, no leaks found, but the coolant's going into engine oil, burning with oil, low pressure after engine warms up, yada, yada, yah. And it's got forty-five thousand miles on it, so, but we're buying the same kind of van again. And I just don't know if there's other options that, I mean, if that's not a van that's, I mean, maybe this is just a dud and that's the one dud we've had, but I don't know if there's other vans out there that would give you better usage or be a better running van. But it seems like, I mean, this one, forty-five thousand miles, that's, that's almost new in my book and that it's considered to be replaced. Now, the year is nineteen-ninety-eight, so obviously it's a van that doesn't get used very often. But at the same time, we're replacing it with the same kind, which I guess I'm not too impressed with this track record. So I just didn't know if that was, if there's other options for some of these cars that, if they don't, you know, if they're lower mileage and older cars, if there's better track records. I don't know, but I know, I think all of us as citizens or as, when we're out buying a car, if there's a car that I only got forty-five thousand miles on, I'm not gonna buy that car again. So I guess that's one of my questions is, do you guys look at those kind of things?
Yes, we do, and let me give you a little history on that van. It actually was purchased, used and had about thirty thousand miles on it. This is the evidence van, and so what happens is it gets driven out to the site and then it sits there and idles. And so the engine, even though it only has forty-some thousand miles, it may have a hundred and twenty thousand miles worth of idle time on it, we don't know exactly. We do know that, that this particular van has been in to our shop numerous times and we've taken it to the dealership trying to figure out why the oil pressure drops on it after, after it warms up. We continually have that problem. I think that's also the one where we believe we've probably got a head gasket that's blown on it. And if we keep it, we'll have to put a head gasket in it and take the engine apart and put the head gasket in it. So we looked, because of the low mileage and the need, knowing that this thing isn't gonna get a lot of miles again, we went out and surveyed the availability of used vans again. Buying another van that maybe has fifty-six thousand miles on it, fifty or sixty thousand miles. And what we found is because we get such tremendous discounts from the manufacturers that we're gonna pay as much or more for a used van that was four or five years old than what we would be able to get with the state price for a new van. And so that's why we ended up recommending the new van. So that's part of the thinking behind that particular piece of equipment. And it, we can limp by another year or so, probably the way it is. Or we can spend some money and try to figure out why we've got the oil problem. But right now, we've got our mechanics as well as the other mechanics that are telling us they probably have to tear the engine down to figure out what, why it's doing what it's doing. But anyway, that's the story behind it. One of the tools that we have with some of the newer vehicles, the new patrol cars, they now have run meters on them. And what we've found with the more recent ones, I think for the last four years, I think they've had hour meters. And what we've found is that our patrol cars, while they have a hundred thousand miles or a hundred and twenty thousand miles when we get ready to take them out of the fleet, we found that because of the idle time on these vehicles that they have equivalent to two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand miles plus or minus because of all of the extra time that's spent idling in the winter and in the summer as the officers are writing reports and working out of their vehicle. So the mileage is one indication of the use of the vehicle, but there are other circumstances. And now we, again, with the newer vehicles, we do have some additional tools to help give us that information. And we're tracking that and we're giving that to the police chief and the department so they know what vehicles and which officers possibly are spending more time idling.
So we have a motion on the floor with a dollar amount, what's council want to do, we need an amendment or a postponement?
While you're thinking about it. The maintenance now on these, you say we fix them, we put tires, interior, where's that come from? What fund does that money come from? Do we have a maintenance fund right now?
Yes.
How much is that a year?
I didn't bring the budget down with me, but we have, we have, we have money. But if you go into the operations in the back, I can find it pretty quick.
I'm on page one-twenty-nine at Public Works Operations, the very back page. Is it the materials and supplies category?
We have, under operating supplies, we have a certain amount of that and I didn't, again, we've got a detail of that two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand. Most of that is salt and chemicals for the road, but we have an amount in there and again, we don't have the explosion on that one. But it's in that six-sixty account where we buy our replacement vehicle parts and.
Where are you, under the line items?
Yeah, you gotta go back, back to page two-sixty-one. I'm sorry, I thought you were back there.
I was in the.
Yeah, back in two-sixty-one. There's two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars in operating supplies. And then six-sixty-two, the seventy-five thousand's what we carry for, our outsourcing of repairs.
So if we have seventy-five thousand in the vehicle and equipment budget, seventy-five thousand five hundred for twenty thirteen, you want to add five thousand to that? Or specifically for these five vehicles?
Ms. Davis?
Okay, one more quick question since we're looking at this budget. So in the budget here, we also have that the fleet replacement is three-eighty-five. So is that also the asphalt truck, is that what you're thinking? That's gonna be two?
Yes.
Okay.
That's not part of this project tonight?
No.
I just, you know, we've talked about only two mechanics, we have basically two hundred vehicles. I'm just thinking, I don't fix cars, but I know I would sure want more than a hundred cars a year to fix. I don't know how, I don't know where I would be if I were a mechanic only fixing a hundred cars a year, that'd be a pretty bleak year. So to me, I think two mechanics is, is good, great for them to work on these cars.
So do we have an amendment or? Okay, so please pull the council on the main motion.
So we vote?
Yes, you're voting on the motion to deny the purchase of the vehicles and then to add five thousand dollars to the maintenance account for these vehicles. That's the motion that's on the table right now.
Motion fails four to three with council members Pond, Starker, Jay and Reinhardt voting no.
Okay, so we need a motion to?
I move to bring the issue of our maintenance policy back to study session.
Is there a second? Second, motion is to bring the maintenance policy for vehicles back to a study session, second by Mr. Pond, discussion on that, Mr. Demont?
I'd like to make a motion to amend Mr. Reinhardt's motion to postpone the purchase of the vehicles until we get a chance to talk about him in study session.
Sure, the motion then becomes, I set that as a friendly motion to delay taking action on this until we've had a chance to bring the policy, thank you.
So now the motion reads is that we're gonna send the vehicle maintenance to a study session and we're not purchasing any vehicles at this time until we talk about it at a study session. That was a friendly amendment? That was seconded by Mr. Pond, please pull the council on that motion.
Didn't I? Hold on, hold on a second, I thought I did. Motion carries seven zero.
That concludes our agenda for this evening, we'll move on to city manager's matters.
Thank you, Mayor, I just want to remind the public and city council that we have some public meetings for our new proposed park at Forty-fourth and Kendall. We had a meeting last February, or last February, February twentieth. Our next meeting is March sixth and the third meeting will be March thirteenth. All the meetings are held at the Active Adults Center. You can check out our website for information on that. There is, three concepts have been proposed for the, for the new park and those can be found on the city's. and those can be found on the city's or on a website that is dedicated to the park. It's at www dot forty-fourth and kendalpark dot com. And there should be a link from the city's website on that also. And also, the city did receive a Jefferson County Open Space grant in an amount of two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars for the construction of this park. Also, we did have a tour scheduled of our transit-oriented development site. I believe that was today. Yes, tomorrow afternoon. We postponed that to a later date. You should have received an email on that. Just wanna make sure everybody got that. Because of the snow, we wanna postpone that until March fourteenth, Thursday, March fourteenth, from four to five-thirty. So that's all I have.
Thanks. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
I just have one issue. There was a discussion last week, at the last meeting, about the minutes of January twenty-eighth, and I was to insert Mrs. Jay's comments into those minutes. I spent about three hours with headphones on trying to find the comments. And as it turns out, those comments were made on January fourteenth. Those minutes had long since been filed permanently in the Laserfish system. So, Mrs. Jay, if you would like to restate those comments tonight, I would be glad to put them in tonight's minutes.
I had written them out and had given them to you.
Pardon me?
But I had written them out and given them to you, because I went back and listened to it to make sure that I had done it accurately. But, you know, this is not worth the time, so it's fine. Let's drop the whole idea.
Okay, you don't want me to put them in tonight?
Well, I had written them out, and if you don't have a copy of it, I don't remember.
I still have that email.
You still have that email?
Mm-hmm.
And I put the comments in the email?
Those comments you made were on January fourteenth, not January twenty-eighth.
And, but you do have the ones that I did make.
I have the email that you wrote.
Did I include the comments with that email, is my question?
Yes.
Okay. If that's satisfactory with you, it's fine with me. And if not, we can drop the whole business. It's not that big a deal. That would be fine. Let's just do that.
Do what?
We can drop the changing of the minutes.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two things. I've had several communications from concerned citizens about the potential changes that are happening at Crown Hill Park. There have been some changes that have been proposed. Those have been put on hold. The city of Wheat Ridge does not control Crown Hill Park. Jefferson County and maybe their open space, I'm not sure who actually does, but jeffco.us/parks is their website. Citizens that wanna stay informed on this should probably go online to crownhill@jeffco.us or contact Jefferson County Open Space at jeffco.us/parks or slash parks. There's a survey that users are encouraged to respond to, and there'll be, it looks to me like plenty of opportunity for the public to comment and to get their feelings known about how that park should either be developed or not be developed. In another matter, I attended an opening session, general information session put forth by the Wheat Ridge Building Department concerning the new two thousand twelve adoption of the International Building Codes, which the city currently uses another edition of that, but will be looking to take public comment in the next several months on possible amendments to that code. So I would urge you to stay in touch with that. You can contact the Wheat Ridge Building Department and find out information about public meetings and other opportunities for input into the adoption of the two thousand twelve international codes and any possible amendments that we will make to that. And that should be coming, I understand, in sort of in the April and May timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I just wanted to add one more thing about the Jefferson County Open Space. I actually did get the email for the survey, so make sure, folks, if you've signed up for the Jefferson County on the website, that you should probably have gotten the survey. So be sure you fill that out and let your feelings be known.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Mr. Demott?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. Would be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, check with one of us or staff. They'd be happy to do it. Positive thing, you know, as I drove around yesterday and today, it was great to see a lot of the neighbors out helping their neighbors, shoveling snow, and in general, helping out, and that's what Wheat Ridge is about. And that's one thing I like living here. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jay?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Yeah, just a quick follow-on to Mr. Goff's comments on the Kendall and Forty-Fourth Avenue Park. Joyce and I attended that meeting. It was well-received. And I'd like to encourage the people that do care about that park to be involved now and to go to those two meetings on the sixth and the thirteenth so we won't have you here after the fact asking for more outreach and participation. So please go, please participate. The Parks Department and the community very much wants your input on those parks, so thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Goff? On the two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollar grant, was that what we applied for? Or is that a percentage of what we applied for? Was that the total amount?
I believe that's what we applied for. That's usually about what we get in the two-hundred thousand range, correct?
So I just wanted to thank all the folks who had applied for the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority. They're doing a good job, and I would hope in the future that Ms. Davis and Mr. Demott, under elected officials' matters, maybe in the future, give us an update on urban renewal and the housing authority as we go through the next few months. They're busy. They're doing a lot of good things, and it's good to hear from them. So with that, we're gonna take maybe a five or ten-minute break. We'll come back for our study session at eight fifteen. So let's, I'm gonna call to order the special study session for February twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen. The first item on the agenda is public comment for three minutes on any item on the agenda. I had talked to the city attorney about this, and it was great if people spoke at the first meeting, but we would ask that you don't repeat yourself and say the same thing again for the study session. So if you have anything new to say, please step forward and for three minutes. And John, I'm timing you, so.
Just hit me with the gavel when I'm over.
Okay. And please spell your last name for the record.
So I'm John Marriott, M-A-R-R-I-O-T-T, and my business is at forty-seven fifteen Kipling Street. And I have a comment to make about the proposed trail on Kipling Street, and then a couple of things about it. Number one, I commute by bike, six months out of the year as often as I can, when the weather allows. I don't live very far, but once I get to work, then wherever I go, I go by bike when I've gone down there on my bike. And I tell you, one of the big difficulties in Wheat Ridge is there are some big impediments for to north-south travel when you're not in a car in Wheat Ridge. Namely, I-70 is a huge one. The only places to cross I-70 are Wadsworth, Carr Street, Garrison Street, and Kipling Street. And then as you go west, again, it's not till Tabor Street and then Ward Road. Crossing underneath I-70 on Wadsworth or Kipling or Ward Road is extremely difficult. So you really cut those down. So that's a big impediment to north-south travel. The second thing is Clear Creek. And, you know, crossing over Clear Creek, we only have very few opportunities. There's Forty-Fourth where it crosses Clear Creek, again, at about Iris Street, I believe, is where it is. Kipling, and then again, not until, gosh, I don't know, somewhere back there to the west, there's one opportunity before you get to Youngfield. So again, not many opportunities there. And it makes it where some type of being able to travel up and down Kipling and/or Wadsworth, Youngfield, those become fairly important. If you have all day, it's not a big deal to divert a mile east, a mile west, two miles either way to be able to make your, you know, make your connections. But the reality is, a lot of times, you don't have that. So I think some form of ability to move up and down Kipling Street on a bicycle is very important. Now, I don't know that it necessarily needs to be a ten-foot wide trail. A five-foot sidewalk on each side probably works. Currently, I've actually ridden my bike from my shop to the rec center, and it's very difficult. I would not let my kids do it. But, you know, I think it would be a nice improvement the city can make. In doing that, whatever you do with that, I would encourage you to underground utilities along that way wherever you can, particularly in the areas that are not likely to be commercial areas that are redeveloped. Commercial redevelopment, I believe you can make the developers do that as redevelopment happens. But in the areas that are already parked, or for instance, across the street from the rec center or residential areas like between Thirty-Fifth and Thirty-Second, I think it's real important to underground that stuff before you put the infrastructure for the trail in. You'll just never get a better opportunity. And I mean, I know you've got lots of things to worry about money-wise. We were sitting here talking about replacing vehicles and, you know, whatnot. There's a never-ending list of things to spend money on. But think of undergrounding these utilities as an opportunity to do that before the concrete goes in, because if you don't, it virtually will never happen. And I mean, I would feel better about city employees driving older vehicles around and taking advantage of this opportunity to underground some stuff while you can and also build these trails while you can. I think they're very important for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on public comment on any item that's on the agenda? Well, Gene, that's what we were talking about, one or the other. Do you have something new to say?
West Thirty-Eighth Avenue, are you talking about that?
Okay, you can speak on Thirty-Eighth Avenue.
Okay, Thirty-Eighth Avenue is a waste of time. It's a really a waste of money. Those diagonal back-end parkings should be changed. It's a safety hazard. Spending more money, moving planners and this and that is not accomplishing one thing. We had a town meeting... We had a town meeting before this came up, a great many of the public did not want it. I asked the question, how many of the business owners, operators on West Thirty-Eighth are in favor of it? I don't know. What kind of operation are you doing? You're forcing this down the people's throat, wasting money. Please do it. Stop doing it, say no, stop spending.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to any changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to staff reports?
Well, with those comments, following those comments, we're gonna talk about Thirty-Eighth Avenue. With all due respect, Mr. Shirley.
Do you have staff reports first?
Oh, we have no staff reports this evening.
So now we'll go on to Thirty-Eighth Avenue?
Yes, yep, thank you. Well, Mayor and Council, we're, we're here, um, in front of you again tonight to, uh, discuss, uh, Thirty-Eighth Avenue and its progress, and, um, try to get some direction tonight from Council on, um, some future steps. We're coming up on nine months, um, pretty close to nine months, I believe, since the beginning of the, uh, bless you, um, road diet trial that, uh, is in place on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. Um, we're continuing to evaluate the, its impact through several different metrics, and we've given you one very preliminary initial report, and we, uh, will provide you, um, with a twelve-month report very soon. As you all know, a marketing plan has been developed, including a new brand. There's been two very successful events on the corridor. An event committee, um, is currently finalizing, um, a series of events for two thousand and thirteen, so they, we should have information on that soon. Economically, we, we've seen some success along the corridor, which we're pleased to see. There's been an increase in, 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 um, overall in sales tax and, and some initial, new business development. City's been reaching out to the private sector in the last few months to, um, encourage them to invest in, in the corridor, and we're actually seeing signs that this, the interest is increasing, that Thirty-Eighth Avenue is, is a place to be for business. So, so now what, is the question, and, um, we, we would like to, uh, talk about, uh, a few options for moving forward. We've heard from many of you on Council over the last few weeks that you're concerned about the current temporary look of the improvements, and have, have asked staff for some potential options on moving forward. Back on January twenty-eighth, we brought, we did bring some, um, very low-cost, um, improvements to City Council, received quite a lukewarm response, um, from, from City Council at that time, and we were asked to, to, um, take a different look at it and, and bring back some more options. So, tonight, we are here to present you with some new options of moving forward, with some more, um, permanent roadway improvements, um, along the corridor. Could the videographer turn down the, the camera lights in the back also, please? Thank you. So, um, as I mentioned, we have, we have several different options. Always, every project you're looking at, um, I think doing nothing is, is definitely an option you, you need to consider. At this point, we don't, uh, staff doesn't recommend doing, doing nothing. There's been quite a bit of investment already in, in the, in the project we're still under a trial phase. So we, staff doesn't necessarily feel that's the best option today. You could wait for the trial period to end, which is coming up here by the end of, um, this year, and then at that point, evaluate all the metrics, um, and, and then decide on the next steps. Those metrics are, um, business development, sales tax growth, uh, traffic accidents, speeds, um, and vehi-, or, uh, pedestrian traffic along the corridor, which we're, we're tracking. Another option is to, um, construct some temporary improvements, which we, um, we're calling the landscape islands, and we brought that option back to Council on the twenty-eighth. That was a, a relative inexpensive option of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, that's, that's the option I think we received, um, some lukewarm response on. Option four is, is what we're gonna talk about a little bit more tonight. It's kind of a middle-ground option of, of what we talked about on the twenty-eighth, and then also, um, of what the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan calls for, um, the, the permanent build-out of the, of the corridor. So the option four is to construct some, some permanent improvements, um, along the Main Street District only, and it's, there's a range of cost between six hundred thousand to two-point-three million. Or the, the fifth option, again, as I mentioned, is, is kind of the full, full-blown option of what was, um, spelled out in the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan, and that is to implement the full permanent road design for the Main Street, um, which is, uh, closer to five million dollars. So with that, I believe Sarah is gonna jump up and discuss, um, some options, and, and we've got some graphics of, of what, um, we potentially could see, um, as an interim permanent solution to, uh, a portion of the corridor.
Thanks. Can you guys hear me?
Is it, is the battery on?
Testing. On now?
Not very loud. Maybe we can ask Jesse to turn up his volume a little bit? And maybe, and maybe talk a little louder, too?
Sure. Is that, is that okay?
That's better, yeah.
Um, so I just was gonna quickly walk through a couple images that were provided in your memo, which are pretty conceptual in nature, but are supposed to kind of convey what this, um, on the list that Patrick just gave you was option number four. Um, it's a, a move towards a permanent design, but, um, wouldn't necessarily be the, the final step. Um, this is looking at the north side of the street, um, in front of the school property there. We're looking towards the west, um, with Teller, um, the most immediate street there, and then, um, Uppam a little further to the west. Um, this is existing conditions, and, um, this image shows that concept of maybe being able to do, um, a pretty long, um, because there's no curb cuts on this side of the street, a landscaped island. The option that you see here has, um, a six-inch curb, although the material being used obviously is not kind of your standard, um, concrete curb to give a more quality look. Um, there'd also be an option to do, um, a raised curb, which is more expensive, but has a little bit more of a substantial look. I would point out that, um, these are just landscape islands in the sense that they're, they're disconnected from the existing sidewalk. Um, so this gap that you see here is the current, um, gutter, and then the curb is here. So that gap would remain so that, um, stormwater can continue to flow through here. When we did the public outreach for the corridor plan, uh, what people voted that they wanted the most on the corridor was a wide, continuous sidewalk. So this could be the beginning of that. Um, there's a possibility to come in, in the future, and fill this in, um, so that you actually have, um, a continuous sidewalk and kind of access to this landscaped area out here, which you wouldn't have in this first phase, but it, um, you know, is the beginning of getting to that final design. Um, the other, some other items that you see in this image are, um, the ability, you know, we're working with Excel to hopefully be able to put, um, the smaller flag banners that are on the city-owned poles, onto Excel-owned poles as well. And then we already have in the budget for two thousand and thirteen to do an overhead banner. There'll be another view of that that's a little better on the next slide. Um, so this is an additional view that we put together, again, just for kind of a concept of what this could potentially look like. This is now looking the other direction to the east. This street that you see coming in right here is, um, North Uppam Street, with the school property being right here. Teller is kind of right back here. And then this image shows, um, again, what the potential improvements could look like. For those in the audience who probably not be able to see this level of detail, but for City Council, um, this does show a raised curb option, so it's about eighteen inches. Um, so a little more, um, substantial curb there, um, on both sides. And, um, another concept that's here that could potentially be included as part of a project, depending on, you kind of how you want to allocate the dollars in the budget, are doing some, um, gateway or monument signs with the Ridge at Thirty-Eight logo, here as you come in on that western gateway. And then here's the banner again, um, with a little clearer view of it. Um, if we do go forward with this option, we would definitely want to hire, um, a landscape architect, urban designer, to come up with a plan in terms of the materials, both the, the hardscape, you know, the curbing, as well as the plant materials, to make sure we're at least starting down the path that's recommended in the marketing and branding plan of creating a real brand or feel for this district. Um, one of the, one of the challenges on the street today is that we have, um, you know, frankly, kind of a hodgepodge of, um, looks and aesthetics. You have the, um, kind of retro fifty-sixties look at the eastern end with the clocks and, um, the streetscape project that was done in two thousand and one. Um, we have the recent project that we did, um, this summer, which added a lot of, um, a little bit more of a modern look, um, with, you know, some, um, metal and steel look and the EPE wood that the pop-up cafes are built out of, and a lot of, um, ornamental grasses. And so what we would hope to do is bring somebody on that can, um, you know, really come up with a design and present a couple options, um, for plant material and hardscape material that will really look quality and start to hopefully, um, tie the district together. And that's all I had, Tim's gonna take it over from here.
The, uh, the next two slides basically show you the opportunity to do the intermediate, uh, design that Sarah was talking about, and so on. This particular, uh, drawing shows the section from, from Uppam over to High Court. The six-inch.
I guess this is.
High treatment that, uh, she showed you in the first comparison on the north side. Just for that one block, it's about seven hundred thousand in the first treatment. She showed the second example, the raised island is a million dollars for that segment there. And you can see there's less opportunity as we get, uh, closer to Pierce because of all the driveways that are, are there now. As we move forward, we would look at, uh, discussions and with the property owners to see if we can consolidate some of the driveways and be able to provide more green space along the street. At first watch, this is the area that we find today could be improved as, uh, as shown in those earlier photos and models. And then, uh, just so you would have it, we did put together, uh, some budget estimates, and these are extremely rough budget estimates for the area, the Main Street area over to Pierce. Next, the, uh, middle portion of the sheet shows you the six-inch curb, uh, estimates, and then of course, the bottom numbers show the, the, uh, raised estimates. Both of the projects include, uh, provision for a couple of the, uh, entry signs. And because of the amount of green space we're putting in, we would recommend that we go ahead and, uh, purchase and install the irrigation system so that we have the ability to keep, to keep this stuff alive and not spend as much time in the maintenance.
So those are just some, uh, real initial, um, concepts on, um, kind of an intermediate step that we could take. And as, as Sarah mentioned, if this is something that, um, Council desires to move forward on, we'd, we'd have to have some more discussions and, and bring a designer on to, to look at this in more detail. But scheduling next steps, um, as I mentioned before, we're gonna continue the evaluation of our metrics, and, um, we should have traffic counts starting again in, in April, um, on the corridor to, um, then we'll have a, a annual, uh, comparison of, of those metrics. And then we're also looking at the, all the other metrics, hopefully we'll, we can come back to you in May. Um, as we mentioned in our meeting in January the twenty-eighth to you, there was some, some discussion and, and, and comments about, uh, if we can't do anything, we could potentially consolidate, um, the planters, um, from the eastern portion of the corridor into the western portion and, um, provide a bigger impact just on that portion. That's something, um, we're gonna plan to move forward on anyway, um, and we can do, start doing that in the spring and summer of this year. The, uh, overhead banner poles, um, or the poles for the overhead banner, um, are gonna be going up this summer also. Then hopefully, we're getting pretty, pretty darn close, I'm hoping with Excel, to, uh, start to, to be able to start using their pedestrian lighting, um, from Harland to Wadsworth. So we should be able to get banners up, um, on those this summer also. Um, if Council chose to move forward with this intermediate, um, step, um, as, again, as we mentioned, we, we could start, um, the design process, um, very soon here, um, get the public involved, and, you know, there could actually potentially even be some potential, some work this year, but the most of the improvements would be done hopefully at the, the start of, of next year, as soon as they could get into the ground, so that the improvements are in, the landscaping is in, and as early in the summer as possible, so that, um, it has a, a full growing season. And, um, we have a fully landscaped, uh, Main Street for our activities that will be planned for that year. So with that, we'll, um, take any questions and comments that you may have?
Ms. Davis?
Um, so I have a couple of questions. So I know we've talked about consolidating some of the, um, street to make it not look so, uh, temporary. And, uh, but there's no cost on here, and, and I know we've talked about this, and I've thrown it out, is, um, what's it gonna cost to re widen the street? Uh, I know, especially like, if you look at Harland from Harland to Sheridan, I, I think that that area, I mean, it's nicely, as, uh, Mr. Shirley had even said, or someone had said, that, um, you know, that hasn't, that landscaping is, is walkable. It does have the islands with the grass in between the streets. So it's almost like we took something that could do for now and kind of messed it up. And especially with that Safeway's or that King Supers, I'll tell you, I do drive it every day, and that's the only area that drives me crazy from, um, and I know it drives other people, other areas drive people crazy, but, uh, from Sheridan to Harland, especially with that Walmart, is craziness. And then I just don't, I, I see that it was a nice street before that, walkable, we had islands, we had a sidewalk in between the street and, or islands between the street and sidewalk. So there's no discussion with that. So we kind of talk about this little section, but we don't talk about the rest of the street. So I, I just don't know if there's discussions about that, if widening that street is an absolute no. But I, I, you look at other main streets and no main street is two and a half, three miles long. So I want to throw that out since it doesn't really come up.
Ms. Davis, could you kind of clarify? You're saying Harland to Sheridan, that's where the old streetscape is?
Yeah, yeah.
What's your concern about that?
Well, I guess we narrowed, we narrowed the street, and so it's got like temporary, uh, you know, little planters in there. And it, and my, my thought is, why don't we just make it back to four lanes or how it was? To, to make the, from Harland to Sheridan. One, it's not, uh, you know, a lot of that's homes, and it's not a walkable commercial area anyway.
So you're saying Harland to Sheridan, put it back to the four lanes like it was?
Yeah.
Not, not the streetscape part, this is the street?
No, no, no. Yeah, because it's already streetscape, really, it looks nice. But then we've kind of made it look tacky by throwing some planters in the road and narrowing it.
Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
So the question is, is, is the city looking?
I mean, there's nothing in the plan for that. It's like, okay, let's make this section nice, and then is the rest of it gonna still look temporary? Are we gonna have a do-over and widen it? I mean, what about the rest of the street?
Yeah, we didn't specifically talk about, um, re, or, uh, reversing the road diet. But Tim may have some costs off the top of his head, I'm not sure. But we were trying to present, um, an affordable package to you that you could, that would have the biggest impact in the Main Street District. But, you, you know, we could definitely look at cost of, of reversing the road diet. And, you know, there's still plans to consolidate, to remove those flower boxes from the eastern portion and move them more closer to the western portion, so maybe that's enough to begin with to declutter it or, um... But Tim, I don't know, do you, do you have any estimates of what cost would be to?
It, it wouldn't be significant if, if you wanted to convert that back to the four-lane facility. We'd have to re-stripe it, more than likely, we'd, uh, do a mill and overlay, um, this time, and put in good striping if you wanted to do that permanently. I could prepare an. I could prepare an estimate for you and give you that cost, but I don't have one tonight.
Mr., do you have any more questions?
No, I'll listen to other folks first.
Mr. Reinhardt?
I've wondered about that too, but I also had a concern that if we did that, I mean, my understanding of the data the last time was that, to a certain extent, how you move the pace actually pushed the problem different directions. And I was sort of concerned that if we took out the middle piece from, I guess it was Pierce, I was assumed somewhere Pierce to... I'm not sure what the endpoints are, but the question is still the same. Haven't you driven all of your, haven't you really, doesn't it make the traffic congestion problem at Pierce in particular more convoluted? And do we, I would like to at least know that answer before I started moving those lanes around because it seems to me we might have actually exacerbated the Pierce situation, which I think was one of our tougher spots on the study by, by depending on how you transitioned back to four lanes.
So your question is if you put it back to four lanes?
Is it going to make it worse for traffic flow?
It really, I don't believe it would because we, what we do at Harlan is we only go less than two blocks and we start widening back out to the, to the original configuration. So it's just a matter of moving the taper back to the west. And so it wouldn't, shouldn't impact what happens at Pierce. We would look at that and see, if I'm wrong, but I don't think I am, that we could make that change and not impact traffic west, west of, west of Harlan. So we're really only going to affect the location of the taper.
To take it further, start further west, it could have a problem.
Yeah, you'd start it at Harlan West.
No, we'd start at Harlan.
But if you started at Pierce, it could have more impact.
Yes, if we moved it all the way to Pierce, I believe that would definitely change and have a big impact. But I think if you wanted to make the transition at Harlan, I don't think that would have much impact to the existing conditions either side of Harlan.
Okay, Mr. Starker, then Mr. Pond?
Does, do these improvements, and looking at the section, let's say, between Uppam Street and High Court, do they address if you're eastbound on West 38th Avenue, the taper and the identity that you're coming into a narrower roadway section? That's, that's been one of the things that I've heard a lot of comments about is that all of a sudden you're, you're squeezing down traffic and you may not really appreciate as it, as it's coming upon you. Does this give us an identity feature out there that addresses that issue?
Yes, if you look at the, at the drawing from Uppam to Uppam, eastbound, we're suggesting you see a small triangular area that's landscaped. And so we, we believe we could start a taper there and have a landscaped taper harder, hard with some features. And then at the intersection with Uppam North, you can see that we are showing a larger section of green, so we can get more of a feature there. So we think that we can address that whole issue and show the taper a lot better with, with the landscape features.
And where does the, the westernmost overhead banner, where is it located?
It's going to be located, it lands just in the west side of Teller Street. And I believe that Sarah will be able to point that out to you with, with the cursor. It'd be right there. We'll be, there's very little opportunity to find a spot for the pole on the south side of the street. And we found a location at Teller, just on the west side, to drop that pole. We have plenty of room on the north side. In fact, on the north side, the sidewalk actually transitions a little bit to the north. So we have some extra space and doesn't interfere with the sidewalk.
And as long as we're drawing banners in, show me where the easternmost one would be.
We don't have, we don't have a drawing of that tonight.
Is it further, is it further east than Pierce Street?
Oh, it's, it's over just to the, it's, it's just outside, well, just on the very west edge of the King Supers parking lot.
The intent is to attract visitors off of Sheridan.
Okay, so we're actually about Benton Street or somewhere?
It's, I think it's just, yeah, just short of Benton, I believe.
Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Actually, I was just going to continue the conversation from Christie. So I don't, this is just specific to that. I think one thing we probably need to be a little bit careful about is to make sure the intent, there's three districts on the street by design, commercial, neighborhood, Main Street. And obviously, most of this work is really focused on Main Street. Your comments are really, I think, commercial, the commercial district. Of course, the neighborhood is the district between Pierce and essentially Pierce and Harlan. Is that right, Sarah, Pierce and Harlan? So, you know, so obviously, any of those discussions I think would have, there's, I think there's some good reasons to talk about the, the specific aspects of the diet and the landscape features of the diet in that neighborhood, in that neighborhood portion. Make sure that we're not kind of either creating some, some kind of push-through traffic issues in that zone and/or taking out some of the kind of sectional features that I think were important to that, to that zone. Having said that, I, I don't disagree that there's some opportunities in the commercial district to think about this, this section, maybe even the previous section. And then, but I would say that we do have very recently some things coming, that have already come through as rezoning at the DePew location that are mixed use. And I think we would probably want to kind of consider that although that roadway right now doesn't have those elements, we might be, in fact, have already started to encourage the type of development that would, that would benefit, benefit from the wider sidewalks and things like that down there.
Any other questions? Patrick, you did say that staff is going to start consolidating some of the amenities in the Main Street area regardless of what happens tonight?
We will. I mean, if we definitely get direction not to move forward on, on this interim step, we'll have a better idea of where to consolidate those. But if, if we are going to move forward, we'll have to get a design going and then that'll determine where we can place those, consolidate those planters.
Okay, Mr. Snipes?
Yeah, just because we're talking about it, I've been getting a lot of complaints on this guy that shows up every day and a half with his little bucket and his thing and picks up trash. That somebody...
On 38th?
Yes. Somebody hired the company to clean it or whatever. One, they were upset that they do it. And number two, they only clean the south side of 38th. I would like you to remember, there is another side of 38th. But everything is done to the south side of 38th and we're getting, feeling left out. But there is some company or whatever that every other day, they go up and down the street on the south side picking up trash and I don't know what all they do. Anyway, I just want you to know I'm getting complaints. Now, at any time, since you start putting those cement hoop-de-dos and stuff in there, that's going to narrow that street. Now, are we at any point going to be in violation of our city charter doing that?
I think we've already narrowed it to a point that it won't be narrowed anymore with the planters in place, correct?
Or did we violate the city charter when we restripped it?
We, I don't believe we have because we've not made a permanent improvement. I think when we make a hard permanent improvement, we will need to address the ordinance concerning street width. But as I recall, the street width ordinance, I think it speaks to widening and I don't, I'd have to reread it to see if it speaks to narrowing.
It's widening, not narrowing.
I think it's, I think it's only to the widening of a street, not to the narrowing of a street.
I just wanted to make sure because I would not want to be in violation of our city charter at any point.
Flow line to flow line. So restriping, of course, doesn't change flow lines, which is the terminology. I think you're right to raise it though. But the terminology in the charter provision, which controls, and the charter provision kind of got replicated with a little more detail in the code, is flow line to flow line.
Okay. And then, you know, to me, this is still an experiment. So we've got to watch what we spend money on, in particular, things like that. But you will be narrowing the street and then we're going to have to do a traffic study to make sure that that street then can handle the traffic of a four-lane street to a two-lane street. So we're going to have to be careful of that. But I'm sure that will all come out at the time that we've done the experiment here. Because that's the problem. See, you can't...
Correct me if I'm wrong, with traffic, all traffic studies have been done, correct, to narrow it to, to the two lanes? We're not doing anything different than it is today. It's just putting landscape islands in areas that people don't drive today anyway.
Yeah, but we're going to have to do a traffic count towards the end of this thing to see.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be doing traffic, another traffic count in April for sure. And then continuing after that.
And I, and I do, since we're discussing it in a public meeting, I want to make it aware that this has already hurt several businesses on 38th Avenue. And I just want to make you aware of that. So, you know, are we going to be the sacrificial lambs just to, you know, get this going or whatever? But, you know, you could conceivably lose between 50 and 85 employees on 38th if some businesses have to close because of this. So I just want to make you aware of it, that there are some problems down there. You've created some problems for some businesses. And I just want to make sure that in all the grand scheme of stuff, that you're aware of this.
Sarah, would you put the options back up for council to see on the PowerPoint? So staff, you're asking for council to address some of these options of the, for 38th Avenue to move forward, right?
Do you want, these options are the dollar, is this slide, Jerry?
This slide.
Okay.
These are, these are options for moving?
Yeah, we can, we can talk from this slide first if you'd like and then, I'm sorry.
Mr. Demott's been trying to get in.
Mr. Demott, sorry.
Let's see. The, the pictures that we're looking at and the plans we see are already violating the city codes. The sign code doesn't allow for pole signs. It doesn't allow for signs bigger than 50% the width of your building. If you're putting rigid 38 on every single pole, I should be able to put Pietro's Pizza signs up and down 44th all over. I should be able to paint my entire building with it and put 18-foot pole signs off, but I can't because it violates the city code.
I, I believe it's, and Ken can correct me if I'm wrong, but the sign code does not allow businesses to advertise for a private use. I believe a city sign that's advertising a city event is different.
There, there are some exceptions for public signs that advertise city sanctioned events, et cetera. We are actually, it's a good comment, Mr. Demott, we, we had a meeting today to look at what policies and procedures we want to have in place for how you can use both of those signs, both the span banner that's, that's proposed at either end of the corridor to go over the street and principally to advertise major events and also to brand the corridor, the ridge at 38th. And then also the Excel and/or city-owned light pole signs and what those could be used for, whether it's for strictly public things like a brand of ridge at 38 or public events or whether there could be some private use of those in some cases as well. So we're going to be getting in front of council and Tim can speak to this as well in some sort of a study session format to talk about what you think are the best policies for how to use those, those different sign mediums. And then based on that direction, whether and if we need to adopt certain code amendments that align with that direction and/or policies and procedures that, that would be more flexible, that we could change over time as well. So there may be code amendments that are necessary, but at a minimum, kind of a policy document that outlines how those signs can be used and by whom.
Well, I understand what the function of the poles and the sign is, to advertise the different events, but you don't let businesses do it. So that, I was just making a point. You don't let businesses put pole signs, but we're allowing ourselves to pull signs. And that's, that's just, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, but not, not on 38th.
So council, I think staff needs some real clear direction from these options to move forward. Oh, okay, sorry, Joyce.
If we could go back to Attachment 2, which was the, the design, the landscaping on 38th there between High and...
Sorry, what is?
Attachment 2, the line drawing. Okay, now, we're talking about working in some of the existing planters. Would that, those be worked into that area there?
No. The existing planters would be reused someplace else.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking...
We were going to bring some in from the east and cluster them up.
That's if we, that's if we take the second option that you showed, I believe, I have the options in front of me right now. But this drawing, which shows the green areas are locations where we would put in permanent kinds of planters.
Got it, got it.
That would have irrigation and water taps.
Okay.
This is in lieu of the planters movement?
I, I got it. So then the others would go, would be further east?
We would take anything we have in this area and then relocate those planters someplace to the east so that we would use that current investment that we've made on 38th.
Okay. That, that was because I was thinking that I would like to see that design, how those were going to be worked in.
Yeah, if you look at the drawing that you have on the screen there, you'll see that we're even proposing that where we have the pop-up cafes, that we could actually build a concrete or a patterned concrete patio and take those temporary pop-up cafes away and put in a permanent facility at those locations with landscape around them.
And we're talking within this budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just add one point on, to clarify about the, the, not the pop-up cafes, but the planter boxes? They wouldn't be in this area, as Tim was just explaining, because this area would just have all the permanent landscape islands. But we could still explore the possibility of consolidating so that there are much larger planters in the Main Street District. So for example, you know...
Filing them up or stacking them or something?
Right. Like what we're looking at here is Uppam to High Court, but the Main Street District goes all the way to Pierce. So we could still try and focus, you know, getting much bigger pods in that Main Street area by relocating them.
Sarah, would you mind putting the options back up? Do you mind, Joyce, if we put the options back up now?
No, I'd like to see that. That'd be great.
There you go.
Sorry.
Go for it.
Well, I guess, given the reality, you know, the thing that, that I would really like most to do, and I don't know, and it seems to fit within the mandate of what's feasible, given where we started with budgeting and things, it would be, if, I actually like the next slide, the one that shows the Look Closer banner. Even if we couldn't do, if, given where we really are in terms of budget, if we were to, and I think there's a, I think I've heard a tendency towards consensus to think that a lot of the effort east of Pierce in terms of the temporary things is not, just not having an impact. So I, my, my, and I would personally try and find a way to do from Uppam to High Court, but I don't think that we think that's feasible from any practical standpoint this year and particularly in light of the concern that, you know, we're not, we're still in these metricses and we'll take a lot of money before we've certainly told, completely validated. So my, what I'm getting to is I would be, I would be tickled if we could figure out a way with, to consolidate and even at a relatively modest amount of potential redo, if it didn't work out, to do everything essentially from the banner to the west or the banner, or from High Court essentially to Uppam, to actually create that entry in a permanent way. And, and to handle another concern, which I think I share with, with Councilman Starker, which is to do something that makes that taper visual because I think, I think it's in absence of bringing something in on that edge. So if we could even create this entry statement in some fashion that is, well, I think it would dramatically improve what we do. And then if we get one of the really stuff that doesn't go over well at all, way off the east and bring it in, we might, we might, within the context of A, what's doable and B, what we've agreed to invest this year, have... uh, within the context of A, what's doable, and B, what we've agreed to invest this year, have, have the most impact. I don't know, did that, too much ramble, or did that make sense to anybody?
Mr. Pond?
Lost.
Almost.
Almost, on both counts. Um, so, can you clarify, 'cause I, I think I, I certainly am tracking on the effort to consolidate the effort between High Court and Uppam, but where I lost you, I suppose, was to what level of permanence, I, I'll just state that what I think we have on the books, you know, anyway, is the, is the banner sign, right? Um, so, I guess, what are you suggesting as it relates to the on-street improvements? Uh, in terms of permanence versus temporary?
I guess for, for me, I, I'd, I'd be willing to take a run at, at, at a, a, a permanent, in, in, it's really just one, two, three, four permanent raised planters and the planter beds that go with them. And if it turns out, you know, and that's, my, my thought process is, we get another set of metrics in, in, in late spring, it takes us at least that long to get the program of what that would look like consolidated, so sometime in May or April, when we evaluate the next, if they continue to track, to show that the system is working, we're in a position to make a decision to do something yet this year, that would have impact by the Carnation Festival, and there's something along those lines, without spending six hundred thousand dollars, but maybe some less, you know, something that's not that far out of what we already budgeted, so that it, so that we have something to show for the Carnation Festival, so that, you know, it's got some sense of permanence. And if it turns out we're all dead wrong, A, you know, and we wake up next December and we decide we were dead wrong, which some people are already convinced we are, but I'm not, the, the, the amount that we have to undo is still in a palatable space, instead of in some outrageous space, so.
So, just to clarify, 'cause I wanna make sure, there's one slide in here that talked about schedule, if you're talking about a shorter section, High Court to Uppam,
I, I'm hoping that we, if we narrow it down to four planters, that we can, we can find a way to design that, without going to a whole outreach and get it bid and build and put it-
Okay, so I guess the question would then go back to staff, because this schedule certainly doesn't, doesn't indicate that, it indicates a design this spring with the construction and next spring, so I guess.
Scope, where do we, mile off the ranch?
Well, that, that was our thought, if, 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 if council wanted to do an Uppam to High Court, which, if you look at the prices again, could be anywhere between six, six hundred thousand to a million dollars. Um, if you, if you wanna do something, half that even,
I'm talking Teller.
Teller to, um, you know, you know, we still would have to go through a design process, I believe, and hire designer, um, which does take some time, I'm not sure if the vegetation would, could get in early enough, um, to have any impact by Carnation Festival, we really didn't discuss a, a shorter, um, half block, I'm not sure. We did discuss going from Uppam to, to, um, High Court, and we didn't think we'd have the time to get something in this year. If we could get it in this year, it'd be at the very end of the summer, probably after Carnation Festival. Um, landscaping would be planted in, in, close to fall. Um, so that's why we kinda proposed this schedule, that you could get something done at the very start of the summer, and have the full summer of impact, but, I don't know, Sarah or Ken, do, do you have any comments on doing a half of High Court to?
I mean, I think your, your, your comments are, are right on target, we, um, we think it's real important, if we're gonna move forward with something that's permanent, you know, that we're digging up asphalt to put in new curbs, uh, even if it's just the phase one of something that's permanent, that we wanna make sure we're doing it right, and that it aligns with the brand that we're trying to create, and the streetscape environment that we're trying to create. So, to, to Patrick's point, we do think it's important to have a design process, and bring a, uh, as Sarah mentioned, an urban designer slash landscape architect onboard, uh, to make sure that we're getting that work done right for, for the long-term vision, so I think that's what puts a little kink in this, in the schedule, as, as Patrick described.
If you just wanna do some type of entry feature, with some maybe monuments, signs, um, and maybe take care of that transition piece, I mean, maybe something like that could be done with, if you're not doing the landscaping as much, um, but I think if you're gonna add four landscaping pods, I think that gets back to our concern of being able to have that ready in time.
Can I ask a question to Davis? Davis, uh, what would be the, the issue if they, they consolidated the planters in this area, and made some more, more issues, like your, your, the entry, but didn't spend six hundred or three hundred thousand dollars, but actually got it to where it was consolidated, you had your poles, you had your banners, you had those planters moved in, and, and waited, waited the eighteen to twenty-four months, is that still a, is that a problem?
I, I, I think that's, that's, it sounds like it's the only thing we can possibly get, I just think that, you know, my own sense of what's practical may be overly ambitious, but I, I also think it doesn't quite get over the hurdle of, of professionalism that I was hoping we could do, and, and I didn't, I just have a hard time getting my brain around, you know, we are, we are laying this out on the grid of the final configuration, and, and that we could not find an, an interim program that goes there, I would certainly like, I mean, the minimum is what we've talked about to me, which is what you're talking about, bring the, everything up and focus it on that area, because it's really not doing us any good on the east end. And then, uh, I do think the two little signs that are shown here are incredibly important, and sort of, and there, but I would love, and maybe it's not, maybe all we can really do is bring the planters up to, to, to reflect this image in some way that, and that's kinda where I get off, I don't know.
Mr. Pond?
So, well, I mean, I, I think there's, maybe there is some balance and compromise to it, 'cause I, I certainly agree that, um, not only the entry, the entry, uh, piece is extremely important, and obviously, that's something that we're talking about, the banner poles, um, the smaller banner, banners with the Excel ones, I think are extremely important as well, and we need to keep pushing on that. The, the taper, I suppose, that opportunity i- is maybe, is maybe, uh, important in two ways, to try to start to, to, um, facilitate that, that kind of look in field, but also to take care of the safety issue that we know is up in, up in that thing, so. And, and I think no matter what, maybe what we're talking about is, obviously, extending our, some of the improvements, right, which would be, some of the committed funds, because we would, we would probably, at some point, maybe even tonight, be suggesting that, that, um, additional design work ought to be contemplated, acceleration of some pieces ought to be, ought to be contemplated, um, a- and so I think we, we need to kinda have that discussion. I know Mike is probably excited about generously donating the hundred and seventy thousand that he saved earlier to, uh, to that cause.
Designing the-
Yeah, I think-
Sarah, can you go back to that options screening, sorry, so they, council has something to base it off of? Oops, there you go. So, you have choices of doing nothing, wait till your trial period ends, which is end of two thousand thirteen, you construct the temporary improvements?
Well, the temporary improvements is, is awfully close to what we're-
Talking about.
What we're talking about.
My suggestion would be a combination of one and two.
Shocking.
Mine would be two or three.
Yeah.
So, I guess the other question I have, can you go back to that, uh, map area, that Thirty-Eighth Avenue map area? Sorry. Yeah, okay, so, if you look at, okay, so if you're going down, you're at Uppam, doo, 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 uh, you're at, then you go to Teller, and then, my recollection, 'cause I drive it every day, is between Teller and High Court, so you got Right Coast Pizza on the corner there at High Court, but then, um, actually on that whole side, you, we already have like trees and landscaping there, so, so it's, it's, uh, it's certainly not as beautiful as the picture you just showed me, but it, it has greenery and landscaping, so, half of me even, okay, and I, I'd rather do something than keep tacky planters in the street. Um, even if we do the other side, because we still have the greenery and, and that type of thing over there already, that is, you know, complimentary to what we do on the other side, but, um, I'm just talking out loud, but, you know, we do have big trees right there, and it's green and nice as it is, just a thought.
Okay, so what do you wanna do? I'm not pushing, I'm just trying to make, staff, staff needs some really clear direction, 'cause everybody's getting beat up on this if they don't have some clear direction.
I'd like to see if there's a consensus to ask staff to come up with a design for a permanent configuration, I'm assuming I lose, by the way, but is there a consensus to, to work on a permanent configuration from Teller to, if the transitional, not from Uppam, so that we can have a presentation on the, that area presented in a, a permanent format, format as, as quickly as is practicable?
So, Uppam to Teller?
Basically, yeah. In a, in a permanent level of finish.
On the south side, or on, on both sides of the street?
I think it's really, I, it's really more, it's both sides, but it's not long, it's not the whole length, it's, 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 it's in, it's just the visual statement you get when you drive down Thirty-Eighth, in my mind, when you pull up into that, so it's, it's an end island on the north side, or something along those lines, there's somebody over there-
Including the transition triangle.
Including the transition.
Is that Uppam to Teller?
Well, it really ends, but it ends at the pole, in my mind, and, and then on, I don't know if it has to be the whole north side, but the consensus I'm asking for, just for a starting point, is Uppam to Teller, with north-south transition and a, and a permanent configuration.
And just to be clear, south Uppam, probably, right, that, that first triangular transition piece?
Right, so that you can see the, the road change.
Does staff understand that?
Staff understand what I'm asking?
Staff understand that location?
I do, I, I would suggest that if, if you're doing that as, it, it, just about gonna need to do it just on the south side only, because if we try to do anything in the north side, we have to do away with the bike lanes and, and re-stripe. So, right now, we've got the center, center offset, so, to accomplish what I think I'm hearing, we oughta consider south side only.
I thought there was a discussion last time about getting rid of the bike lanes.
I, I think- There would be. Are not part of the plan, and they're, they're, and, 'cause they're, I know they're not part of the plan, so, I'm not concerned about, um, something that's not part of the plan going away, um, and I, and I, my personal opinion is, an, a nose island, even if it was only fifteen feet long and six feet wide on the north side, would balance the, the entry in a way that it ought to be balanced, but it's just, I'm just a, just a geek engineer, so, let the planner over there-
No, well, uh, landscape architect, uh, the, but the, but if you do, if you do change that, that orientation, then you, you, you probably have to carry it out further, further east, is that?
Yes.
Right.
We'd have to go, we'd have to go further east, and you see that-
On the restriping, at least.
Yeah, and to do that, we'd have to, to do some, some milling.
Right.
But the thing is, that to put any landscape on the north side of the street, we need to move the center line back to the south, and, and use the space that we're using for bike path on the south side for that purpose.
Mr. Starker?
If we did, if we did just the south side of the street, from Teller Street West, could you get that done this year?
If we know what we're gonna build, we could try to get it done this year. Problem is the design, if we know what the design is going to look like, you know, if, if you want a six-inch concrete curb, I, we can do that, if that's all we're gonna try to get accomplished, but if we wanna have something that is more than that, then we need to have design performed, and that's gonna be more involved.
And tell me again, sort of, that we haven't dis- discussed the difference in aesthetics between the, the raised curb and just a regular six-inch curb, so elaborate, if you were the designers, what's, what's the benefit of the more expensive option over the, over the basic curb?
I, I'll go first, I think the biggest is just that it's a much larger visual impact. You know, when you have a really low curb, um, I think it's, you basically, a, as a, in a car in particular, aren't really gonna feel the border of the island, you'll notice the trees and the vertical elements, but you probably won't really feel kind of that, um, enclosure around it, if you have, uh, something this tall, then you're actually gonna perceive, you know, oh, there's, there's something of substance there, um, in addition to the landscaping. So, I think, you know, that's, that's a big difference, um, but it's also, you know, a significant difference in cost. I think another thing to think about, too, is the images that we looked at, like even, um, the example we showed of the six-inch curb here, this is still a really wide curb with stone, is the example here, which is pretty different than a, a narrow six-inch concrete curb, so there's also the variation there, and you could do a six-inch curb, but make it a little more substantial and a higher quality material.
Does the, your cost about, if we look at, say, the six seventy-six thousand, does that, does that get this wider curb, but maybe not necessarily higher? So, it's a more generous look, or, or was the six seventy-six just a straight six-inch vertical curb?
Six-inch vertical curb, and again, these are budget numbers, so- we may, and, you know, we might be able to get something better as we do the work.
All right, so Mr. Reinhardt made a consensus, anybody have- No, I mean, Mr. Reinhardt did.
Oh.
Mr. Reinhardt made a consensus, anybody wanna d- address that? He's talking about doing a, addressing staff to do a permanent type of design between Teller and Uppam?
Would it be the permanent type of design that would fall under the, um, raised island category? That is more-
For purposes of argument, I'll say that's what the consensus I'm proposing.
Okay.
Teller to Uppam.
Now, let me ask you one question, too. Are we doing this all with, with or without the benefit of public meetings?
My perception of, of this is that the, would go to the leadership committee in the standard way, but if what we are doing is implementing the already approved plan, uh, what we're, all we're talking about is taking what steps in an already approved plan, so it would go back through, in my mind, the leadership committee on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and then come back to council for, for action in those public settings.
Yeah, but see, I don't buy that, because all this stuff was supposed to be temporary for eighteen months, to try this thing out, before you start putting permanent stuff in there, and I think if you go put permanent stuff in there, you better have public meetings on it.
I would do a public meeting.
I have no idea.
Mr. Mayor? I, uh, Mr. Reinhardt, your, your consensus, does that, to, this is, I guess what goes in the minutes, maybe ends up being what staff and we agree on, for, where's my paragraph?
Bid for?
Six, uh, six-inch raised planters, the poles?
My, yeah, well, just, for the purposes of discussion, what I'm suggesting is that we would do the raised planters and the entry poles and signage, we'll call it that, and I think we could refine, I think that's enough to describe it.
And only on the south side?
Both sides of the street.
And it's more than six inches. Six inches was the curb, the raised planters are bigger than six inches.
Yeah, it's the raised planters, the substitute for six-inch curb.
Okay.
And, and Janelle, it's between Uppam and Teller?
And Teller, yeah.
So, you can-
I'm assuming this goes down in flames anyway, so I wouldn't get too uptight about it, I'm assuming it, I-
All right, so that's the consensus, does anybody wanna make a comment, or, on the consensus?
Well, just, I mean, just to cl- clarify, we should absolutely raise our hands or not on it, but, uh, that, if that's the, the case, that it probably is tracking as the longer design effort and installation effort. Okay, yes?
I would say, in my mind, it has to be, it would be consistent with that, yes.
Okay.
So, how many in favor of that consensus? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, that's the decision. Staff, okay with that? You, you understand what he?
Yep, we'll be, bring back a design as soon as possible.
Okay, all right. Is that all you needed?
When we're, we're looking at using a, uh, an outside design source, um, this would be staff-designed at this point, and then, um, I guess what I, what I'm asking is, you know, how's that gonna combine, when it? Okay, would it be worth even contacting some design firms at this point, or? Well, I guess if we do just a, an entrance piece, then we're, are we saying we're not using an outside source, then?
To bring in an outside design firm, we're gonna put the, the process-
Which is why we were trying to save time, yeah. Yeah.
Well, I, I thought, um, Commissioner Pon's comment at the end to clarify the motion was that we were looking at the longer design process. You know, again, I would just caution that if we're gonna do something that's permanent, that we want to have it for a mind of what the long-term design vision is for the corridor and aligning that with the brand and, uh, you know, getting consensus on plant material, street furnishings, um, type of hardscape features. I mean, it was mentioned about concrete, stamped concrete. There's a, a myriad of other surface materials that we could be looking at as well. Uh, and knowing what that palette is before we move forward with something that's permanent.
So we'd still be on the same schedule than, that we proposed though? And I'm not sure if that's what Mr. Reinhardt was asking for?
Yeah, that's what, that's what he clarified.
Okay, design this year, start construction the very first of next year. So do we have direction to actually hi- hire a designer then? Or do you want us to bring back conceptual designs again of what it could look like from Teller to Upham?
I don't, I don't see any reason to come back with another conceptual discussion, discussion at council. I think I'm personally concepted out.
Well, and, and I mean, if we hire a designer, they'll obviously come back for your input. But, um, but we could start that process now and get design, designer on.
It seems to me that that's probably a more thorough way of getting it done and we're happy with it. And this also, this is the kind of stuff that just could be grant-worthy and it, that would maybe give us some time to look in that sort of direction. I don't know, it's just, I think it's, plus we'll have more information back.
So Patrick, the consensus was to move with the permanent designs, that you're gonna wanna probably bring in somebody to?
Yep.
Well, it's only Upham to Teller too.
Yeah, but it's gonna, the permanent design will be eventually phased to.
And then in the meantime, you're gonna be consolidating planters and cleaning up the east side of the street down? Okay, all right.
We even could maybe do something with the planters on that, on one side of the street. I don't know, something attractive could be done to, to pull them together.
Can, can the, um, can the banners go ahead or they, they're?
On the pedestrian poles?
Yeah.
Uh, we don't have final approval from Excel yet. They are.
I'm talking about the two independent banner signs that we would only.
Oh, yes, no, that's moving, that's moving ahead.
That's moving forward.
Yep, those poles have a very long lead time and I think they're being close to being bid out or ordered.
Yes, we're in the process of getting that ready to, to advertise for bid.
They, maybe in the summer before those poles actually get here.
And also tell those guys that are picking up the trash on the south side that there's a north side of the street.
Can I ask you a quick question? Are those people hired by the city or are they probably hired by a random?
I don't know if they're part of the, do we still have a contract with the landscaping company that does, takes care of the flower pots?
Yeah, we do have a, a current contract for, um, maintenance of the planters that we put in, which are only on the south side, which is why they're on that side. Um, if, if, if that is indeed where this individual is from.
Well, I'm sure it is because every other day they're there and they got their trucks parked there.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to water and remove trash from the planters as part of.
Well, not in the winter. But anyway, they go up and down the street picking up trash and stuff. So anyway, I just was gonna say that I've had some complaints on it. And also remember that there's a north side of the street. They may need.
Well, again, the contract is just to take care of the planters, which are on the south side at this point. They're, they're not hired to clean up trash.
Kayla?
Um, I'm sorry, Mayor.
We were gonna move on?
Yeah, well, before we move on, I would, I would like to, um, um, make an announcement to council. I'm not sure if she knows I'm gonna do this, but sad, sad news, but, um, Sarah, this will be Sarah Shawalter's last meeting. She is leaving us.
Oh, no.
Um, she's moving on to the city of Denver. So, um, I, I wanna thank Sarah for everything she's done for the community. It's gonna be a huge loss, um, but she's, she's ambitious and got goals and, and moving on to, to, to realize some of those. So, um, we do appreciate everything she's done for the city. It's been a, it's been a.
I, I have deep sympathy for anybody that wants to go to the web building every day. Good luck, thank you.
Good luck.
So we're gonna move on to the Kipling Street Trail Utility Relocation. I, I don't appreciate the fact that council put this on the study session. This wasn't really to argue about the path, but to say if you're gonna underground, um, Kipling and put the path in, that a lot of the neighbors, obviously tonight spoke, that they were encouraging council to bury the utility lines between Thirty-second and Thirty-fifth if that project goes through. And we know that that undergrounding will go into the street rather than in the, under the, you know, we're not condemning property for that, but it would be Thirty-second to Thirty-fifth was the location that the neighbors and myself and a few other business owners that came in, Mr. Marriott and everyone, was encouraging council to not bypass that undergrounding because if we don't do it now, it's never gonna get done in that location of Kipling. So it would clean up that area. So does anybody have any questions or staff have any presentation?
We, we can go over our, um, what our one percent fund is and, and, um, let you know what, what the available budget is and it's pretty laid out in, in your memo.
Yeah, the memo's pretty clear.
Yeah, does anybody have any questions on that? Then Tim can answer any questions on. We do have, um, um, available funds of one point six million in, in our one percent undergrounding fund, but that's if we borrow ahead for, for three years. The total budget to do all of Kipling, Excel gave us is three point six. To do just Thirty-second to Thirty-fifth is, is one point two million. That's again a budget number. It's, Excel's been notorious for giving us a budget number and, and coming back. Couple hundred thousand more, but, um, so we do have limited funds. Staff, you know, we, we just, our recommendation was based on the, the very limited funds that we had. We thought one point two for a couple blocks was, was a very high number. We all agree that those poles are very ugly along Kipling and they would be great to be undergrounded. But, um, and we're fine if that's the direction you wanna go, we'll, we'll work with Excel on that. But, um, so we'll take any questions or comments that you may have.
Mr. Stites, do you have any questions?
You know, I think we spoke, but in thinking about this, it's kinda like the taxpayers' money. And I think all power lines should be undergrounded from here on in, period. And I know that they talked about a project off of, uh, Youngfield up there with the shopping center or whatever. And then I got to thinking about it and I'm thinking, well, that's the developer and that could be part of that, building of that project and stuff. But I would much rather see, uh, with Discovery Park and stuff, that the, uh, lines over there be undergrounded, 'cause that is bad. That really is bad. And I think it would be the opportunity now to do that. And I think it would be a wise, I don't like spending the money on it, but I do think it would be more wise there than it would be the shopping center or any commercial project, 'cause I think that could be built in, um, for that. So my, I would be in favor of, uh, um, undergrounding from Thirty-second to Thirty-fifth.
Or would you wanna do Thirty-second to Thirty-eighth?
Well, I'd love to do Thirty-second to Thirty-eighth, yeah.
Oh, Thirty-eighth to Thirty-ninth is what I'm looking at.
So that would tie that whole area in, get that done. So my consensus should be to go ahead and underground them.
I, I, I guess I'd oppose that consensus. I just can't see putting three years, all of our resources for the next few years in, into this one, one project. And, um, and I would personally think that, uh, where it's going towards, uh, something that creates growth in the city is a better place for us to invest the available Excel dollars. So I'm, I'm coming on the other side. I think that the commercial corridors, when we're, we're improving them, uh, is, is, is a better use, particularly for me, that it just takes so many years of our resources and then completely ties up our ability to respond. I would have loved to have argued for the one up on the north side too. I mean, I can't imagine what the number would be if to underground every, you know, we're probably talking tens of millions of dollars to do everything that would have to do in the city and to put all of our eggs in this basket doesn't look right to me. So I, I'd oppose that consensus.
Mr. Pon?
Just a couple of questions, 'cause I, I think I need an education, uh, in how Excel, um, kinda deals with the, the differential between undergrounding and, and putting it, putting it, putting it above ground. Maybe I'm wrong, but I understand that if we move forward with, with the replacement of the section there and, and putting this trail in, that they will do this work for no cost.
If it's, it's, if it's above ground to above ground, if they just move it, it's no cost to the city. If it's a city project.
And so the one point two million is a, is a straight line cost. They don't kind of, they don't kind of back out what it would have cost to, obviously they have cost in setting poles and moving the lines. That's not free, right?
Right, and, and what they've done is the one point two takes that into account. So they have credited the project, the cost of doing the overhead pole relocation.
All right, so that's, that's my, that's my question then. So I, I'm making this up completely, but you have some sort of number that says to underground this would have cost you two million, but the, we're crediting you the eight hundred thousand that we would have taken to move it, uh, move it over and the difference is one point two, that's how much it's gonna cost to, to.
It's more like maybe fifty to a hundred thousand dollars for them to move the pole line.
All right. And, uh, bas- based on experience, and we've had this conversation somewhere else and, you know, before is the, you've obviously stated that you're, that you're, um, you have some hesitancy about the number. To what extent, you know, can, can you dig in and attack that number and, and have that conversation?
Well, actually, that's a good question. Tim actually, when we were doing our franchise, um, fought him on this, this primary issue and, and they, they came back and agreed that they would actually do three bids, I think, on the, on each line. Tim can talk about it.
They said, they said that this is their in-house estimate at this point. They will actually go get two estimates from their primary contractors and give us those before that we move forward. But they don't wanna spend the money to prepare enough design so that they can get the bids if we're not interested in having this work done.
What, so, I, I personally, personally decide, you know, I, I would be interested in understanding what the real number is, right? I mean, so, you know, I don't know what declaration of interest, uh, we have to show to, you know, to, to get them to be responsive, to actually give us a hard number.
We've asked for that and they were supposed to give us hard numbers at the end of January and these are the numbers they gave us at that time. So we have to assume that this, this, these numbers are probably within ten or fifteen percent at this point.
Okay, well, uh, obviously I'd, I'd like a harder number, but, but beside that, I, 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 um, this is kind of a hard issue for a number of reasons. I absolutely agree that this section is, is, is unsightly and it's in a, and it's in an area that I think would, would benefit from its adjacency to an existing section that was, had poles taken down. So from a design standpoint, from a continuation of work that's recently been done, it makes sense. I also appreciate that this is a lot of money for a short, for a short run and, and, and so like I, I have real apprehension about that. I think additionally, there's obviously the people here tonight even who, who, you know, this is intertwined, whether we like it or not, with the, with the multi-use trail project and, and, and what, what moves forward with the, with that project, I, I suppose impacts what decision. That being said, I certainly support continuing to investigate this as a serious option. I wouldn't, you know, I, I guess I don't wanna, I, I don't want this to, to die here in the sense that, that we, we just forget it because I think there's a lot of things for us to, to pursue, a better price and a better understanding of, you know, of its connection to the, to the, to the, to the trail project, so.
Well, Mr. Pon, I could tell you that, how much did it cost to do Discovery Park then, in that year? 'Cause we did, that was a huge.
It's on your sheet, it's just under seven hundred thousand dollars.
So I mean, you know, if, if council gave the go-ahead for this area tonight, then staff will start negotiating in earnest with Excel and it could, it could go down too. So that was my point, is don't, don't give up on this right now because of, of, it, it's a good area to do because it benefits the residents, it benefits the safety on Kipling and the developers on bigger projects can do this undergrounding with S-Step or other, other tools. And so I think, I would urge folks to back Mike's consensus to at least move forward with the plan of being Thirty-second to Thirty-fifth. And then if, if this comes out where it's not gonna work, then we could revisit it. But that would be my recommendation, is to move forward. So staff will start discussing it with Excel and actually get some hard numbers and, and Excel will then start dealing with the city in a, in a level playing field. Mr. Starker?
I had a couple of questions. Mr. Peronto, are the, do, do these electrical lines provide electrical service to the residences there? Do they come off of these poles?
I believe, believe they do, but this is a high voltage line, so it serves property south. So it's, it serves a lot of.
It's a commercial line that's really.
Yes. That's why it costs so much to underground it, because it's a high voltage line.
And then when I look at your spreadsheet on here, we have a current fund balance of about eight, eight hundred and forty-four thousand. And we've, we've accrued that over how many years?
About three years.
About three years. And the nine thirty-nine thousand is, is the next three years?
Yes.
So that's, we're gonna, we're gonna generate over six years about one point seven eight million. And of that, they estimate that it'll cost us one point two. To do that, to do that work.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, let me caution council, we need a decision yes or no tonight because this is gonna impact the grant. And so, uh, we need to find out if, if, and if it's yes, that's great. We tell Excel to get the thing designed, to get us the numbers. We'll have one last chance to say no. Um, but we need to have them begin work to get these, get this undergrounded so that it doesn't impact the grant. So, uh, we really do need to get an answer this evening, yes or no, on whether you wanna do any undergrounding in this, on this project.
So the consensus was Thirty-second to Thirty-fifth? I guess all in favor of that? Please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, four. So move forward.
I attended the Dr. Cog planning meeting this past weekend in Colorado Springs and I, I wanna report on it a little bit because, um, they did a lot of reemphasizing of their previous goals and adding to them, this is for their metrovision planning through twenty thirty-five and twenty forty. And one of the things that came out of it is the almost alarming situation of changing demographics as far as, uh, the booming senior population. And that is really affecting economic development, housing, transportation and healthcare. And fortunately, Dr. Cog is very aware of this and, and does their planning based on that. But it also kind of alerts to me that we should be aware of that too. They also discussed the ever-tightening funding situation with federal transportation dollars shrinking, as well as changing the scoring system to allocate these dollars, which affects us. There also is a solid discussion on the need of encouraging bike routes in our cities because biking, um, I, I heard a number there, I thought thirty percent of the people, is that what I heard? Bike to work? But anyway, I, I just struck me as a way too big a number. But anyway, um, biking is an affordable choice to, uh, to our, some of our transportation problems. So that's all.
I had four things, but I have one quick one because of, because of the time. The Jefferson Economic Council, actually, they've got another additive vowel, I think, to their formal name, is asking for us if, to make a statement of support for their fundraising operation. They're asking us to give anything at this time. And I was just. So, um.
Yeah, when we get the bid.
So, so I was wondering if, if council had a consensus to authorize me to write a note supporting their attempt to raise funds. Their main function is to bring primary jobs into the county. We, we're in their organization. They're just asking for us a statement of support. And they, they're sort of ongoing, so I was hoping. you would support me in getting a letter out, or even come with Jerry's name. I'd appreciate that. They they had a little draft. I'll send it to her and put it out under your name as well, whatever. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Did they send that thing out to the people that are on Kipling about that sidewalk?
Assuming they did.